We are a few minutes early, but we'll go ahead and. Time is still 6:24. And I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Chuhah?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Lohko?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, approval of our minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from August 10, 2023, regular session?
I do. On page three, at the, under legislation, ordinance number 3247, in the third and fourth paragraphs, the numbers show 3245. So I'd like to ask that both be amended.
See that? Should it be 3247?
It should be 3247.
47.
Okay. I had one minor one on page two, under the Planning Commission report. It says, I asked if the development, the willow tree development was private, public or private. I don't recall asking that unless, does someone else remember?
I think, I think I, was it from you saying?
But I would also think it was in reference to the roads, not just whether the development itself.
I think that was me.
Was you?
Okay.
I think.
And you think it was road specific? Okay.
I'll claim it if no one else.
Well, you must have, because when you see my response, it must have been more general than that. The sentence below. Like we stated, the development, streets and drainage system will be private, water and sewer will be dedicated to vault use. So you may have asked that question in a more general sense.
Do you have those?
Yes.
I know I was thinking roads, but I said.
Okay.
Any other additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuhah?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lohko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number five, Managers' Report. Randy, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Several things tonight to go over. The Fall Newsletter is in production and should be delivered soon. Did we have any estimate of time, Amy?
They were taking it to the post office today.
Oh, it should be in residents' mailboxes.
Next few days.
Next week. Once again, we're starting the Chardon Employee Fitness Challenge Program on the 19th, I'm sorry, the 18th. It's a six-week challenge. All employees are permitted to go online and sign up and participate, and you can win prizes if you place in the top, you know, ranks of the members who are doing it. But everybody who does participate gets a participation award as well. So it's good, just kind of a fun competition between people to get them out and get them doing things. And tonight is the, I guess, the first annual Elliot Miller Night here at City Council. Oh, here's Elliot Miller now.
Elliot!
Hi.
We already had you.
Elliot, you're going to come up about, not yet, no.
Not yet.
You're going to come up about four times tonight. Just coincidentally, this was not planned. Elliot has been rehired as a part-time maintenance worker in the Division of Lands and Buildings for the Service Department. Elliot was previously employed here as a seasonal part-time worker in 2019. The 2022 Annual Report was finalized last month in August, and it's currently up on the city's website. The report identifies key initiatives, projects, programs, and events that occurred in 2022. There's more in the actual report, but I have some here I'm just going to rattle through for fun. Mayor Grau was sworn in as the first mayor under the council manager of former government to be directly elected by the residents of Chardon. Chardon Square Association and the city partnered to commission two murals to be painted behind Main Street, one along the alley and the other on the back of the Lands and Building Garage Workshop at 106 Water Street. Elliot Miller, local artist, painted both of the Chardon landscape behind the Giving Garden and the Welcome to Historic Chardon murals. The Memorial Drive and Sixth Avenue were successfully vacated, returning those properties to the adjacent landowners. Two Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations were opened in the parking lot at 106 Water Street. Congratulations were sent out to the Chardon High School varsity baseball team on the wonderful season they had with a record of 24-10 season that culminated with a thrilling Come From Behind 8-5 Division 2 State Championship win over Archbishop Hoben High School. And the Chardons, City of Chardon and the county announced that the Board of Commissioners and the city agreed that the county would undertake efforts to renovate and expand the Jogga County Courthouse, which would include a significant investment by the county and also the city into Chardon Square that would benefit all the residents. And there are terms of agreement contained in what's called an agreed upon, agreed judgment entry, which was approved by the court. Moving on to a different note now, not the Annual Report. This past Saturday, as part of 9/11 National Day of Service, about 50 members from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints spent three hours working on the Maple Highlands Trail here in the city, weeding it for us. Most of their efforts focused on the water retention, the rain garden water retention beds around the trailhead, the buildings around the trailhead, around the pump filtration building, and then part of the trail between Water Street and Park Avenue. So a big, huge thank you goes out to all of them. This was something that they organized between themselves, and they did a tremendous job. If you would see some of the before-after pictures, they did a nice job. It was sorely in need of attention, and we could use another three hours of the 50 coming back, but probably not going to get that till next year, maybe. So thank you, if you're listening, for your efforts.
Did they just reach out to us, or did we?
Well, they did.
Yeah?
Yep.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Actually, I got a text from Paul when he was riding on Saturday, and I was out in another part of the county running. He's like, there's a whole bunch of people here. What's going on? No, it's just, don't worry, they're here helping. So thank you all who came in early today, councilmen, to see the equipment. Wanted you to see some of the equipment that has been purchased over the past year or so, and just kind of be able to physically intact, tactfully, tact, what's the word?
No, just go ahead.
To actually touch the equipment that you guys helped, helped fund, approve, and that we can get. So we appreciate it greatly, so I wanted to show it off to you.
About a half million out there.
About a half million dollars was sitting out there, wrapped up in those pieces. So on behalf of all of our staff, thank you very much for letting us have good equipment. Moving on to Public Works Department, project update. Center Street Sidewalk Infill Project, project is under construction. If you've been going up and down Center Street at all, you can see the sidewalks are being torn out, they're being placed in, the concrete's gone down. Some of that concrete has had to come back out, but it's going back down again. So that's, so it's moving along. It's been years and years in the making, and this was the grant, if you remember, from Noaka. I think it was $130,000 grant that was making that happen. And GMHA on Center Street has already reached out and said, thank you, thank you, thank you, because they will benefit tremendously. We won't have wheelchair, not wheelchairs or, yeah, wheelchairs and things in the roadway anymore. So it's a good thing. Hidden Glen Water Main Loop, city's working with Hidden Glen Associates to realign the water line in order to avoid the big soil, stockpile of soil down there, which currently is in the line that we thought we were going to go in. So we're trying to redesign that to stay away from that. Anything else to report on that, other, Paul or I?
No, I mean, survey work is, for the, for the alternate route is underway, probably wrap up tomorrow.
Good. The Seventh Avenue Repair Widening Extension Project, again, if you're up there on Seventh, on Center, the work continues. Signal service has been out, starting to drill some holes so that new signals can be placed in there, too. The new road is being created, the old road has been milled off. It's just a mess up there. I mean, there's so much going on right now. Redwood, the day they had their opening, the sidewalk construction was going on, the signals were going in, the work was going on the road, and then there's buildings being built. So there was just so much going on, but it just shows that there's a lot of activity. We couldn't have, couldn't even tried to make that happen if we had wanted to. The Maple Highlands Trail Stream and Wetland Restoration Project continues to move forward, too. The Army Corps of Engineers has approved the permit for the project, and we're hoping October, November, that they're going to be able to get started. Still getting some of the permits needed that have to get done before that can happen. The Center Street Sanitary Improvement, the line upsizing from Manhole 261 to 350, no update on this time, still working on that. And then the big one coming next year, the state root resurfacing in 2024. We're currently waiting for a proposal from the traffic engineer for the ADA ramp provisions and an environmental update from the city engineer. Some of those numbers have been coming in, and Mark's been plugging them all into the CIP that we're trying to get wrapped up as well. Any questions for me tonight?
I see that, oh, shoot. Chardon, they just, they, the company down there that does snow blades and that kind of stuff.
Chardon Welding.
Chardon Welding. They replaced weed, okay.
As part of that project.
Okay.
Their, one dry apron was in excess of the minimum, and so.
Maximum.
Maximum, sorry. So we replaced that and their other apron as well.
How'd that work out behind the, behind the sidewalk? It's still?
It's still pretty steep. It's about 11 and a half percent now, but it was 16% the dry apron was, their northerly dry apron. So when we brought the walk-through there, we picked it up a little bit and got that dry apron into compliance.
Are they, are they happy with the work?
We'll find out when they finish backfilling the back of the sidewalk.
They will be.
They will be, all right. Thank you.
When is, when is all that supposed to be completed, Center Street?
They only had about a month in their schedule, and they're about, just under three weeks. At the end of this week, it'll be three weeks, so I would say.
Another week, week and a half, probably. Quite a few people talking about it. They drive by and see and anticipate getting places easier than, than they did, so it looks good. Okay, are, any other questions for Randy? Okay, we'll move on to Planning Commission Report. Andy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Planning Commission was busy this month, past month. We had regular session on August 22. We had just one item on the agenda that evening. The architect for Mr. Avini, the owner of the plaza at 425 Water Street, came down and talked about some additional work to be done at the Marx store. You may recall, you've seen the, last year they replaced the brick and block cladding that was around the pillars on either side of the entrance. Now they're going to be doing the similar work, remove the old cultured stone facade that's there, which is in failing condition, and replace it with, with a facade that will match the column. So that was duly approved. Steve, do you have any, have they started that yet there?
I think that they've still, I think they're still doing the exploratory to know, so they can finalize all the engineering drawings for the underlying stuff.
Okay.
They, so they're, they're not quite starting.
Yeah, there's possibility that there was some structural work that needed to be done. They didn't, like you say, they didn't know how bad things were under those windows and so on.
Yeah, they wanted to make sure they got our end approved, because that, that was going to be the easier part, in their opinion, was making it look, look pretty versus making it safe. So they wanted to get our end out of the way, so now they can design all the, all the engineered stuff they need to do underneath.
Then, on September 5, we had a special Planning Commission meeting. There was, again, just one item on the agenda, and this was the then-designed architecture. Their architect and their engineer came in and presented their concept plan for the parking lot, the construction of the new parking lot on the east side of, of East Park Street, this colloquially known as the pit. So that, that was duly approved, and if you saw today's Maple Leaf, there was, there was a picture of what the improvements are going to be for that in the, in the newspaper. We, again, we negotiated with them as far as getting a buffer between that parking lot and the adjacent property on North Handman Street, and that was incorporated in the plan. So things are still moving along in that project. And Steve, do we have any idea, when, during the back and forth in the Planning Commission, they were advised to, Majid was there at that evening, and he advised them to submit their concept plans for the courthouse addition as soon as they can, so that we can get a chance to make a formal review and have formal comments. Anything happened in that front yet?
There's been talk back and forth. I would expect to see the concept plans for that in the very near future.
Okay.
Like, probably, maybe next week even.
That concludes my report.
So, Andy, that's the project, if approved, it's going to start this year, still?
In, yes, in theory, that will, yes, it will, that will break ground on the parking lot this year. That's what we're told.
Yes, in theory, yeah.
We'll see.
In theory. Okay, are there any questions or comments for Andy or Dan?
One other thing, I just, Steve, I'm going to throw this on you unexpectedly. Can you give us an update of when we're going to have our, our final update of the, of the code revision?
That, I did have it, I did just finally make through reading it cover to cover. So I'm hoping to have it at Planning Commission, possibly in October.
Okay.
Which would put it at council in November, so.
So we're not going to have another joint meeting?
No.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Andy. Moving on to Council Committee Reports. Service Committee, Dave?
Okay. Service Committee met on August 17. The focus of the meeting was on the cemetery, actually. We had a request from a resident to, would like to place two urns in the headstone, which, reading our rules and regulations, there's some questions how, how that would work. For example, we, and help me, guys, we restrict now five burials to per lot. Is that it? Total? Maximum five per lot. Well, with two urns in the headstone count as part of the five, or do you get five plus two? Things like that. So we're working through that. There are some, at least we know, I know of one instance where we already do have an urn in the headstone, but we just want to get our rules and regulations, so it's, it's clear how that all works. Then we proceeded to talk about the other rules and regulations we're looking at, and we hope to bring that to council in October. Staff is now working on that because it's in the code, which means we're going to legislate, change the code. So we'll bring that to council as soon as we can. We decided to look at all the rules and regulations at one time and try to bring it as a package deal. Then, as kind of a side discussion, and I'm glad Dave Allen is here, the Urban Forester, as you may know or may not know, the city has set aside six graves in the back portion of the cemetery, and I'm talking behind the mausoleum, for trees. And what's happened is there's six individual graves that will never be sold, and then the two graves on each side of that one can only have urns, the tree will. So we have a resident who has indicated he would like to donate a tree to go into one of those spots. In fact, the idea was that these were going to be memorial trees in these six lots. So a couple things. Number one, I think that I've, unless council has a problem with this, I met with Shade Tree the other night. They had a regular meeting, I went. I think they need to develop the procedures and the rules and whatever for donations for trees, again, the cemetery. And what I'm requesting, is everyone okay with giving that to Shade Tree to let them finish that project out as far as how that's going to work? No, it'll come back to council, okay?
I think so, but when David's up here in a few seconds, we'll, we'll let him talk about that and see if that makes sense for that.
And then, what I'm asking is that when that tree, that first of the six, and there could be possibly a second person willing to donate a tree, when that first tree, and you're looking probably in the spring, Dave?
Yes.
I would like to see all six plots have trees installed. And if we don't have donations, I'd like the Shade Tree, the city, through the Shade Tree Commission, to put the others in. I, I think aesthetically, it will look best if we have all six in at one time, not wait and just have like one or two.
And all the same species.
Whatever, I, I assume, I leave that to the expert over there. I don't know.
He'll tell us in a minute.
Dave has indicated to me that there's enough money in his budget to handle that, even if we only have one donation. So I'm looking for council's concurrence that they'd like to see all six put in. I just think it'll look best. Yes. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. And then Shade Tree proceed with putting that together, and we'll bring it back to council. I mean, we have to talk about cost. One of the questions I have is if, if someone donates a tree, it's planted, and let's say it dies in six months. Do we replace it? Does the city replace it? Are they out of luck?
Typically, the.
Donated.
Typically, they're, they're warranted for a year.
Dave, why don't you just come on up? Right? Why don't you just come on up?
You're next, anyway.
You're next, you're next, yeah, you're next, anyway.
I'm not cutting the line. I can, I can do this legitimately, great.
So what, usually trees are warranted, first they have some, is that we're asking?
No, it's not true. Sorry. When we buy trees from nurseries, they just come as is, and there's no guarantee with them. So the guarantee is the landscaper adding money that we would pay. That's the guarantee.
When we put trees in, under our contracts, they're guaranteed for a year.
There we go.
So I'm wondering if, if we could open this up to the public about if people wanted to participate in doing memorial trees, and we put it out there so that maybe perhaps we find, maybe there'll be six people or six families, or five more that want to do that? And then as part of that, if something goes wrong with a tree, the city could, you know, if, we could work that, that part out?
I'd like to do that. We can use the newsletter as a, as a vehicle to get that word out there. If we proceed and do all six, now, there's plenty of room down there if people come forward and want to donate trees.
Yeah.
So we're not, you know, it's not six and we're done forever. So we can, I, in my opinion, we can proceed and get the six in, whether we have six donations or not, and there's still plenty of places, right, to, we could put trees down there. Other, other locations in the cemetery that could be donated, we have to talk about, are we going to allow people to put a little plaque at the tree?
Right.
That, that kind of thing. Who pays for that plaque? How much is that plaque going to cost? That type of thing has to be worked out.
So Dave, what are you asking then? You, you want to give what to the Shade Tree Commission? You're talking about other things that you're still digesting things relative to cemetery on Service Committee alone, right?
The rules and regulations is Service Committee alone.
Okay.
This is just now the, the memorial trees that I'm, with Shade Tree.
Okay.
So I'm asking them, we're asking them to put together the program, the rules, the guidelines, and then asking council's concurrence to go ahead and plan on six plantings next spring.
Dave, is it your opinion that they should all be the same and all be planted at the same time? Two?
They don't have to be the same, but I'd like that they're all planted at the same time, and they're all going to be big. Would be my wish.
Just to clarify, when we say donate trees, we're just talking about people donating the money.
Yes.
Buy the tree. We don't want them digging a tree out of their backyard and, here's my tree donation. Somebody might do that.
Well, we actually, many, 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 many years ago, my understanding, a number of trees somehow showed up in the cemetery.
Yeah, no, that's not a joke. I mean, people will go and somewhere and find a sapling and dig it up and, with a root ball and say, here's my tree.
Okay, so Dave, can you make sure that you're real specific about that, that we would, right? And like, you were going to come up with like?
Yes.
Amount of money, like, that they're going to need to donate for, right?
Correct. Actually, we, we did all this, like, in 2015 or so. We put many meetings into it that year, and came up with a fairly good product, but it had a couple holes in it. When I passed it to Randy, it didn't pass. But it's fine. So it never, well, for legit reasons, so. He said, no.
He's been, he's been holding on to that.
I saw you.
This is your hour, Dave. Go.
Hour? Oh, so we have a plan that it's 90% complete, a couple little holes to fill with numbers of prizes, actually. So, yeah. And I assume that will come back to council for final lesson.
Will, will Dave's plan come back to Service first and then come to council? Do you want to see the, be the go-between?
We can do that. Sure. And if possible, though, it's ambitious, it would be nice to have it done by October, but I know that's pushing things, so.
Before we get to more to David, thank you for standing and answering the questions, but back to the cemetery. Is there, do we look at occupancy down at the cemetery and longevity of space and things of that nature? Is there a forecast?
We're fine.
We're fine?
For the.
Fine with what we have laid out right now for many years to come.
The next step, of course, will be to engineer lots behind the driveway going farther to the south, right, south.
Yeah.
But that's many years away.
Okay. Anything else from Service?
Debbie, anything?
Nope, I think you covered it.
All right, thank you. Hearing of Persons Before Council. David Allen, welcome again.
Thank you.
Go ahead and give us your status update.
Good to be here. I started last year's talk with all the good things we've done in the past 10 years or so. Just, again, on my drive in, I see all these big, nice trees, a lot of good growth on them. So we've been pretty successful. So this year, I kind of segue in, you stole part of my talk. I would like to talk more about the future, what we want to do this coming year and, and further out. So we just got the okay to have a landscape contractor do what's called a young tree mulch program. So there's about 100 young trees that I identified and put out to bid for, put out to quote, for someone, a company to take away the mulch volcanoes, flatten things, find the root flare, make them all uniform in size as best they can, so they'll be much larger. So young trees need all that mulch for the roots to grow. If there's grass, it competes, and so it's a big difference. So this program will start fairly soon. They'll put down three inches of mulch, which is a lot, but that's what the industry says should go down, so it's, you know, a lot. The mulch can't touch the trunk of the tree. So we'll have 100 great examples of how to mulch a tree, and hopefully this is part of educating the public of how to do it correctly. So you should see the tree and then just the mulch flat. So we found a contractor to do that, and they'll start, actually have a meeting with them soon and go over these principles, and then we'll make changes. I would like to, it's time to redo the inventory. I did one when I first came, so maybe, I don't even know what year it was, 2011, let's say, and haven't done one since. And technology, technology has changed, and there's a way to do a cloud-based inventory using iPhones.
using iPhones. So, I'd like to look into that and that way I can utilize the Shade Tree Commissioners to come with me or, you know, take some ships and we'll do a new inventory.
What, to what expanse are you talking about?
An inventory is simply, you go up to an address, say what the address is, identify the tree, measure the diameter at four and a half feet off the ground, that's a DBH, diameter, breast height, write down the condition of the tree, and you can take any data you want, whatever you're looking for, but that's typically what, what you do. And then it just gets stored and then it's a tool I would use to put things out to quote.
So, you're just, you're talking though just trees like in the, in the right of way? You're not-
Correct. Right. All the trees in the tree lawns is what I'd be after. Yeah. We've been noticing, and we've been asked, to put some time into planning what to do with the honey locusts on Main Street. They are, some of them are getting really large and the root flares are picking up bricks and I guess for a long time, roots have been picking up bricks and people could trip and we don't want that. So, I was asked to do a short-term cure and then a long-term cure. We haven't done it yet, but that's something we'll, we'll work on as a group. I imagine it will be, the short-term is lifting up the bricks, either cutting a root or shaving a root down and then put them back. But then, like, five years later, you have the same problem. So, it's short-term, but it's not long-term. Long-term, I wanna look into getting some contractors that know what they're doing and get some prices on how to take out a tree and install a new one. So, with that would be looking at the soil and the drainage and figuring that out. And then we'll figure out a new species. Those are all really large, they're really tough trees, honey locust is the number-one tree to put in a tough spot, which that is, but they get large. So, I'd rather go with a medium-sized tree that we won't have this problem again. And then they max out at like 25 feet, make a nice canopy that you can walk under. So, that's the goal with that. And our committee will work on that, our commission. Memorial trees, we discussed that. Shade Tree Commission itself, we had a change. So, Mike Tvergiak stepped down and he was on for maybe six, seven, eight years. Did a really nice job, is good to have him. And then, you all voted in Marilyn Rohr, so Marilyn will start next month. Looking forward to that. Years ago, when I, before I was here, actually, I took a class on how to be a tree commissioner and it was an excellent class. It's, it takes like two years to finish the whole thing, it's given by the state, and part of it, like, when you graduate, is write up a handbook for your city. So, I did that, of course. And it's pretty in-depth at purpose statement, goals, objectives, annual review, action items. Well, I, of course, didn't use it. I put it down on a shelf and it's really good, so I'm gonna, sorry, implementing more of this. It's really great things to go after and it's all broken down and how to accomplish them, so some of what I just talked about is in here, so we'll do more of that, more big projects. That's it. Thank you.
David, with our recent weather conditions and the fornicating issues that took place south of us, did anything, has anything altered, any plans that you may have for the city? Did we lose-
No.
-significantly?
We did not. What I've noticed since being here is we lose very few trees and very few branches. They get pruned, I think that makes a big difference, they're all looked at. Remove 20 trees a year, is my guess, could be more or less. So, I am taking out these dangerous trees, people let me know where they are or I see them and they go on a list and out they come. And then, so, and then the pruning that goes on also is beneficial.
It appears that pine trees variety, they come down a little easier than others due to their root bed and-
Yes.
I know we're not planting those here, but that's what happens in quite a few of the townships where they, they still have quite a few of those and they lose power more frequently than we do.
Right. A lot of white pines are brittle and they're huge trees and limbs break all the time, tops break out of them, wind just comes from the wrong direction for the tree. And then a lot of spruces have really shallow roots system that's large, but if the ground gets saturated, it loses, holding capabilities gone and over they go. We don't have many in the city.
Very good. Question for Dave.
Yes.
Are we losing anything from the Emerald Ash Bore? Is that epidemic through the area now or is it still a problem? Or are there other tree pests that are on the way we should know about?
Yes. It seems Emerald Ash Bore has done its thing and moved on. I, there's many ash trees that are fine, a lot of folks had theirs treated and they're fine. We removed all that we had, pretty much. We didn't have that many, most were down in the Chardon Park Estates, I think there were like 65 down there. Took them out and put in different trees. I am concerned that there's a lot of ash, it was on one of my lists to talk about, but I didn't bring it up. Trees that are just on the edges, so I don't really take care of them, but I have the money to do that or the, you know, to schedule things. But there's ash trees off the bike path, they're in that curve, they're, have to come down.
That are dead.
Yes. Right, many. Lot of wet spots have a lot of ash trees. There's a new bug in town, spotted, spotted lanternfly.
Have you seen, have you actually seen one?
No, I've never seen one.
Me neither.
They're very pretty. They're about an inch long and what they eat mostly is grapes, hops, and apples. Yeah. Who did that? It overwinters on invasive tree that's from Asia, tree of heaven, and it'll overwinter also on grapes. It's around. I looked at a map today, it's in every, you know, major city in Ohio. I know other places. And the word is just smash it when you see it. So, you're allowed to smash them. They're very, very pretty, but they gotta go.
Dave, is there anywhere, or do you plant any buckeye trees around the city?
Not too much, no, but I could. Would you like me to?
There's one in front of the courthouse.
There's one on South Street, too.
On Short Court.
Quite beautiful.
I went and grabbed a bag.
There were two in front of the courthouse, I don't even know if we have, is there one there now?
One there now.
Yeah.
Yeah. The really large trees are horse chestnuts and in Ohio, buckeyes a little bit smaller and squatter. They're pretty, those flowers are wonderful.
They are.
As long as you don't care about the nuts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Careful. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Before we move on to hearing of persons, we're gonna hear from Elliot Miller. Randy, did you wanna talk briefly?
Yeah, I did wanna introduce this, thank you very much. It's the pump filtration building, which, if you'll recall, is, is right on Park Avenue by the new trailhead that was built a few years ago, adjacent to the baseball diamond. So, as you drive down Park, you can see the one face of the building. If you're on the trail, you'll see the other face. That was built in the 1800s. We bricked it in last year because it's been open and had put up plywood, but the kids would go break it down and then they'd be hanging out in that building. So, we bricked it in last year, kind of in preparation for all of this. It played a big role in, in the railroads. If you, if you came to the opening of the, the trailhead, you heard all about the railroad history, which is really cool, of how many railroads were here, what they did, it was really the economic hub, why Chardon exists, because we had all those rail lines coming through town. We not only had the, the steam locomotives, but we also had the electric that went right up here to the park and went around and, and the old village hall played a big role in that, too. That's where tickets were sold and they had different things going on. So, the history is really cool and that's what we're trying to also depict through the interpretive signs that we're making for that area. So, this is an area where we're going to have more interpretive signs, probably four, five, six signs. And actually, we have a piece of rail that we're getting cleaned up, that we're going to have welded, the signs welded onto those. So, it'll be a kind of this funky rail into the ground in, in the area where the pump filtration building is, with the signs telling about the history and showing more pictures of, of the history. The original thought we had was to use that building inside for kind of these purposes, as like a little mini museum, but that didn't work out because of the, the structure of the building. All that said, I had mentioned at a Rotary meeting and they jumped on it as an opportunity to give back to the community, but also to be part of the project. So, when Elliot talks about what, what he's proposing to go on to these two sides, some of the Rotarians would be able to help get things ready, help him, assist him in doing it. Obviously, we don't have the skills, or Rotarians don't have the skills that he has, but we can certainly help. I think Councilman Means has a lot of history now on the other one, so-
I have.
She can be a-
Yeah, that's right.
-first mate or whatever for helping to-
That's right.
-helping Elliot.
That's right.
So, with that said, I wanted to just introduce Elliot Miller once again, in a different capacity, as the, the local artiste here, and invite him to come up to the podium and go over his ideas here and tell you a little bit about why he chose what he has presented here for you guys tonight.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome, Elliot.
Do you have an extra copy? I don't have, yeah. Sorry.
Put your hand, I know.
Probably should've brought my own. So, along with whatever, everything that Randy had said, I have my design. There's gonna be two walls that are painted. The south wall that faces Park Ave is going to be painted with everything on here and has more of a historical representation of everything that happened and everything that was in the area. The design is based off of illustrations that were very similar to this in like 1890s. And then on the west side wall will be the actual depiction of the BNO railroad that went through the area. And I'm just here to get the design approved for the Rotary. The only thing that'll be added is a Rotary symbol somewhere on this picture. And then an additional route that'll be going through the base of the Georgia County here. But it'll just be a line and it'll say, I can't remember the town, I think it was like Gates Mills and Chester, something else, but just another line that goes through.
So, on that one, Elliot, the one side is all dedicated to the BNO and what that did and then the other side is the CNE, correct? And the CNE came up here and that's why you have the courthouse and some of those-
Right, yeah. Yep.
So, the other, other towns might be Novelty or Scotland, to the west?
Yeah, I think that might be what it is.
Is it Rotary working on it this weekend, trying to get it described?
Looking for a motion? Well, Elliot, so you came, you came up with these yourself and-
Yeah, yeah.
We met and talked about it and I gave him all the Dan Rager books and gave him the history and Adam had given him some things, too, but he went home and digested it all and spent, obviously, a lot of time putting it together. The size of the letter you believe will be able to be, the letterhead at the top will be able to be read when you go by, right?
Yeah, yeah. Cause that'll be about 16 feet wide, that, the part that says the maple leaf root, so it'd be pretty large. Yeah, Dan actually approved of the design, too, and he's written like six volumes on the, you know, the whole rail system, so that was cool.
I'm glad Dan approved it.
Dan approved.
He's a unique individual that is extraordinarily knowledgeable about-
Yeah.
-these things. I could see him looking at something on here and saying, you know, that's not the right time period or whatever-
Yeah.
But if he gave us a thumbs up, he's certainly getting mine.
Yeah, we actually had him come down and take a look at that rail piece I was talking about so he could verify and tell me what the, not grade, how do they call them?
Gauge.
Gauge.
I did talk to-
I was close.
A few days ago, Elliot showed me these designs and so, we're gonna have murals on two sides of the building, correct?
Yeah.
That you just presented?
Yeah.
And then, I, I thought, are we able to maintain the, the brick coloring on the other sides or is that going to be painted completely a different color or how does that-
Well, right now, there's not enough money in the, what Rotary has to, to do this. They have a grant, but it's still not enough to do both of the other sides as well. The one side currently has graffiti on it, so we would need to paint that over and the other side's blank.
But the other side's still brick?
It's still brick, right, that faces the field. So, that one, this remaining brick would make sense, cause nobody sees that. But the side, if you're coming south on the trail, that should be one day improved as well. Will look nice.
Are these gonna have lighting?
No.
Other than what's in the parking lot?
Yeah, I don't know if it would reach it.
Elliot, to, to wrap, you know, like, you have this, this is on the side facing east, correct?
The west side.
I'm sorry, the west side, right on the trail?
Yeah.
So, it was, was it ever considered to extend that just on both sides to-
Onto the north side of the building?
Correct. You know, north and then the west side, was that ever-
Well, originally, they wanted all four sides to be painted and then I gave them a budget that I'd want for that and then we decided to just go with the south and west wall because four murals of that size with the amount of detail would have just been like two months of work and a lot of money just with paint alone, let alone me painting it.
I know that was your initial vision and I'd like it. I don't know how.
There's nothing to say that we couldn't, or another group couldn't take on it, we could just do the other two sides.
Yeah. And I actually left that open because the CNE and the BNO are the two, the CNE is what came up through Chardon, it's the electric cable car and that's not what's being depicted detailed, that's the BNO. So, I was thinking that when the funds are available or like, in the future, we could have a version like this of the CNE that also has like the courthouse in the background and the bandstand that could be on the east wall to be a compliment to the, the rest of the mural.
The east wall doesn't, that one doesn't play into me very much, it's the, the north wall.
The north, yeah.
Directly seen by-
Yeah. It could be put there, too.
But that could be something down the road, is that what we're thinking on, so? And I understand the need to get rid of the graffiti.
I worked so hard on that.
Yeah. You didn't sign it.
I know, I didn't.
I understand.
I think there's a time consideration on Elliot's part. If we were to find funding to wrap the, the engine on the west and north walls, you know, one complete. But you, I think you mentioned that could take months, is that what you were-
Well, if we're to wrap it, would you want it to be an extension of the image or would you want it to literally fold through like the, the engine or?
I guess that would be an artistic evaluation of what could work.
Cause we could just go with this and then if you want something on the north wall, I could extend the trees and the horizon and then just continue the image with a new design that I make without having to, you know, cut this in half or-
The north view would be the train coming straight on at you.
Because it's parallel with the, the trail where, where the railroad was, I think, just having the engine on-
So, Elliot, you're mentioning, so as we look here, you're talking about maybe being able to put this sort of modeling on the north side.
Yeah, I could wrap the, you know, the landscape around rather than wrapping the, the train around.
And could you do the, could the lower tracks be?
Yeah, I could extend those out across.
So, that would look better than, you're gonna have these great, beautiful designs on two sides. And you're gonna have this one area on the north and I recognize that it's, it's more money, but-
Well, would you want that or would you rather have a third mural that would not, like, cause these are-
I guess I was-
-made to a certain scale, right? To go on-
Yeah.
And so, if you're just putting trees or whatever, it may make sense to have a-
I was trying to limit, I was trying to maybe come to a compromise-
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Wouldn't be another whole mural, but something that could at least sort of flow into-
Making one picture. So it's still one picture, but it's on these two walls.
It's on-
Right?
Is that something the council is interested in finding? You've got funds from Rotary, correct? And then Elliot would need to come back and say, this is what, the additional time and paint that you'd require?
One thing is, right, we were talking about that the walls, right, so have to be prepped, and they have to, Rotary, that came up at Rotary this week about getting the walls ready to go. If you're going to run out of time, good weather, because he's going to start, right? When are you going to start? If the walls could get prepped this weekend, for example?
Then I would be able to start like next week.
Yeah.
But the later that you get into in October, it gets pretty cold, and if it's too cold, the paint won't properly bond to the wall, and I wouldn't want to paint it, and then it just melts off.
The cost, I would imagine, is going to be within the manager's discretionary budget.
For what we're talking, I'm sure we could find the money. Right now, the Rotary's budget is $64.05, and $1,405 is the grant. So even if it's another $3,000, I'm not telling you to spend $3,000, you know, for that side. But would you want the train orientation to change so it's going south instead of north?
If it was heading south, then you could have some, be some additional cars or something behind you.
Going behind it, right.
Oh, my gosh. Cold car.
I love all the artists, I love all the artists on the, up here, who are like trying to tell Elliot how to do this, and then add more in before the weather gets bad.
Well, that doesn't have to be, if you can't get it in this year, you have to say, I can't get it in this year, but I could add on to it next year for X amount of money, and we can plan on that.
Okay, yeah.
So you need a motion for us to approve the project, so I'll make the motion.
Second.
Local motion.
Okay, further discussion?
One last question. Is there a sealer or something that goes on the final product that would make it easier to remove graffiti? I'm afraid that this, where this is located, it's going to get tagged. So if there was some way, I don't know, Paul, do you know of some clear coat that can be applied in several coats that would, that you could make it a-
Mike, we're looking at Mike, I don't-
Not looking at you.
Mike says no.
We talked about this-
Goes around the room, boom, 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 boom.
I'm not looking at you, Peter, as a known subject.
Anybody have an answer?
I'm looking at Mike to see if he's aware of anything. I'm not aware, but we'll research it.
This is one area we'd like to get a camera eventually, but it, the mural will be done before the camera's done.
And you don't have a-
Didn't we talk about, like, because when we did the murals last year, about putting a clear coat on them to, so they would last longer? And Elliot, didn't you tell me, like, we needed to give it a year, because it's exterior paint already? So didn't we need to give it like a year before we put another-
Yeah, it takes a year to cure, and then you put the clear coat on it.
Right.
I want to see if there's the utility pole right there.
So the motion that's been made is for this as it exists on two walls, correct? And then we're going to look at-
Yes.
The north wall somewhere down the road. Okay, Elliot, so don't worry about any additional graphics at this point.
That easement where we could put a streetlight on.
I've got your back, Elliot.
For us, damn it. Thank you.
Well, for a light.
Before that gets done.
That would deter, right?
I mean, this one would-
And that's C E I's pole.
That would help, for sure.
That's C E I's pole. We just buy a, we buy a streetlight.
Might have to do some trimming down that.
But that's all getting done.
So I wouldn't, like, change anything about the train itself. The only thing I would do is extend it to the north wall. I would just naturally extend the, you know, the trees and everything, and it wouldn't, it would still flow, but it wouldn't affect the visual of that design.
If your time is limited on that north wall, but it adds some detail there, then a year or so down the road, we want to do a more, one closely like this on that north side, then we could, you could redo that panel for additional funds, of course, but-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then I would like that north wall completed, so can you, would you have to develop a different cost structure for Randy?
Yeah.
To approve? Okay. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hang on. What exactly are we voting on now? Because we have two things in front of us. Are we voting on the extension too, but we don't know the cost of it, and I'm not sure what we're going to make?
I was assuming that what he's designing here, and then he clearly doesn't have a design to say what he's going to be doing on that north wall.
Right.
But he was going to develop a different cost estimate for Randy to approve that through his own discretionary budget-
Okay.
On that cost.
So there's some incremental consideration for extending some of this to the north wall?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you clear up, Elliot?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Call the question?
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Hey, Elliot.
All right.
I think that well done on many fronts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Moving on to hearing from the general public. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard? Come on up and identify yourself.
Elizabeth Geetz. I just, it seems all for naught if we don't replace the roof. There's plants growing out of the roof of that building.
Yeah, we'll just, we have to take those down. They're just growing on top of the roof of that building.
Okay.
There's a vine too. I don't know if you noticed, the vine was killed, so we can get that cleaned up too.
Anyone else from the general public? Moving on to old business. Doesn't appear we have any. New business.
Hey, Amy.
Yes.
Do I just read the business, just to discuss?
Mm-hmm.
New business A, consider announcement of decision and municipal approval regarding concept site plan approval and change of zoning classification for permanent parcels number 10-165740, 10-1-65741, and 10-165742, the Willow Tree development. And this starts with Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council has before it an announcement of decision with findings of facts that go along with it. Essentially, you had a public hearing today regarding the rezoning and approval of the Willow Tree Development Concept Plan. Our codified ordinances require in order to get something into the planned residence district zoning classification, and you have to, one, mend your zoning so that it gets there, and two, you have to adopt an announcement of decision approving the concept plan. So in light of the, these applications for the zoning changes and the concept plan were considered by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission adopted its own announcement of decision. All of that information was provided to council and was provided and available to the public to comment on during the public hearing that we had tonight. If you have any desire to discuss the matter, now would be the time to do so. If not, there's legislation on the agenda as well, approving and adopting the announcement of decision that you have before you that's, we're discussing now. And then you would approve that, and that would result in the adoption of the announcement of decision, as well as the rezoning of the parcels.
Are there any questions for Ben on this issue? So do we need to make a, someone needs to make a motion to accept the announcement of decision?
Negative. You don't need to do anything. If you want to approve it, you can pass the legislation, which is listed as item 11A.
So this is just a time to discuss?
Time to discuss. If, you know, what we try to do is we try to incorporate some time where council can hear from the public during the public hearing, and then now it's on for new business, to the extent you want to discuss it and make amendments to the AOD, now would be the time we could modify them. And then when you pass the legislation, it would be updated already.
I'll just point out for council's information that the items that were, the six additional conditions that were added by Planning Commission to the announcement of decision start on the second page under item, under subparagraph D, private drive A. So D, E, F, G, H, and I, these were the additional conditions that were added to the original documentation that we had from the development.
I also noted to Amy, if you look at the very last page, it says this decision here probably becomes the order of the Planning Commission, which is a typo, I believe. It should say city council.
It should say city council.
What page was that, Dave?
Very last page.
Good catch.
The very last.
Oh, I see.
Last.
Right above your name, Mayor.
Well, yeah. All right. Any other discussion on that, we'll move on to Ben. Moving on to new business B, consider formation of an ad hoc committee to plan for the 2024 solar eclipse. And I know City Manager Sharp wants to speak on this issue.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. This is a very unique event that's going to be happening next year. It's on Monday, May 8. There'll be a total eclipse, and it's a truly a once-in-a-lifetime occurrence that's going to happen. The last one here was in 1806, and the next one will be in the year 2099.
I'll be there.
The eclipse will be around from 2:00 in the afternoon to about 4:30 in the afternoon. But Chardon is in the path of totality, so will be in darkness for about four minutes, starting around 3:13. So if you've been watching the news, this is huge, and being in the path of totality is where you want to be, if you want to watch any of these things. I think most of the hotels are already booked. Everybody's going to be talking about it that aren't already. So it's very cool, and I'd like to see an event go on the square on that day. We already have the square totally reserved for the city. I've been working with Rotary. Rotary has offered to purchase the safety glasses, the eclipse glasses, and hand them out for folks up here on the square, and also then promote, you know, blindness awareness and that kind of stuff through that program. And I've asked them to see if they had a couple people who wanted to be on a committee, and two people have stepped up. Sylvia McGee and Steve Turpin have volunteered.
Of course.
I'd like to recommend Becky Rapaski, since she's our go-to for all of our events up here on the square. And then I'd also like to request two members of council. I'd be a ex-official member of that group, but the group would be five people. And pretty much responsibilities would be to decide on the activities that'll go on that day or during that period of time, whatever timeframe they choose. Live music, community art, movement workshops, yoga, arts and crafts for kids, food trucks, science talks, lectures in the Heritage House, talking about what is actually happening, family-friendly activities, and then additionally, whatever they decide, would have to reach out to those partners and go, how are we going to get this organized? Who's going to come and help us get this done? Is it the schools? Is it KSU Jogga, the Jogga Park, Chardon Square, Chambers? It's all those groups that would like to participate, I'm sure.
Randy, you said May 8. I think you mean April 8.
I'm sorry, if I said May, yes, I said May, but I have April. It definitely is April.
Which I also believe is the Guardians Home Opener.
Is it?
Yeah, I think so.
In the dark, during the day?
It's cloudy and rainy that day.
Well, don't go there, don't go there. The library could be a partner as well. The commitment isn't great. I'm thinking four or five meetings, either during the day, in the evening, via Zoom, via Teams, whatever the group works out, to try to get things organized, and then doing the background work when the people decide who's going to be doing what. It's just too much for us to try to put all it together, so I'd like to have an ad hoc committee to do that. So that's why I'm asking council if there's any two members who would like to do it.
I'll do it. I'll do it.
One.
Heather, we have-
Kyle.
We have two bright stars.
Oh, well done.
Dan.
I was almost going to volunteer for the next one.
I heard it was going to be a dark time.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's too late, Dan. It's too late.
Totally eclipse of the heart.
Okay.
Well, that is an exciting event. You said we're going to be in total darkness for only four minutes?
Four minutes.
Four minutes.
Which is a lot.
Almost total darkness before and after.
Yeah. And whether it's cloudy or not, it'll still have an impact. It's true.
Yes.
So thank you very much. I think it's going to be pretty cool.
And based on what my son said, last time there was a total eclipse, people traveled quite the distance to be in the, in the total-
Path of totality.
I guess like the fairgrounds is doing something, and they're, you know, it's going to be, you know, so, right, the part, right. So it's, I think it's bigger than people realize around here, so.
They're selling tickets downtown and all of those places.
Schools are closing.
What day of the week is that, by the way?
The Monday.
Okay, well, that's good information, Randy, and thank you to our volunteers. I believe we need to have a motion here to allow Councilman Means and Councilman Martin to participate in the ad hoc committee for the 2024 solar eclipse.
Don't move.
Second?
Who would have seconded? Further discussion? Please call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Very good. It's exciting. Moving on to agenda, new business C, consider Heritage House restroom and port-alet use for events on the square. And Paul's going to take us through some information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might add, though, April 8 is also the first day of spring leaf pickup, so mark that in your calendars. We'll work through that.
Celest Fest would like you to please move that, so that the city looks nice for all of our visitors, please.
Moving on. In your packet, you'll see a memo that I put together regarding the Heritage House restroom closure recommendations. As all of you know, with the beautification and continued beautification of the square, the construction of the Heritage House, the reconstruction of the bandstand slash gazebo, the square uses at a maximum. I mean, it's, there's over 30 events ranging from 100, or 50 to 5,000 people throughout the course of the year. Unfortunately, with the increased popularity and continual use of the facilities, or need for facilities, the Heritage House is not capable of handling some of the larger events. I'll ask Mike Buck to comment further on some of those situations where we've been called in after hours and so on and so forth. But roughly, the Heritage House facilities were constructed for no more than 60 guests within the Heritage House and for an event that lasts anywhere from four to five hours. So that's our capacity. That's based on what the building department has deemed that facility at its maximum. We've seen over the course of the last few years where events that are over 100 guests and lasting for over four hours have created overuse issues and recovery issues. We do have a water recovery problem. We put booster pumps in, but as you know, that's pretty much the top of the hill, and water pressure at the top of the hill is not always the strongest. Again, the restrooms weren't sized to accommodate anything larger than that, but those are the situations that we're dealing with currently. We've listed all the events. Obviously, we keep track. We know that there's, there's a wide range of numbers, but, I mean, to case in point, Arts Fest, 5,000 people over a one-day period. Maple Festival, a few thousand each day for a four-day period. Many of these events have started to, chosen to close their restrooms as they don't want to be responsible for the cleanup. to be responsible for the cleanup, the maintenance, the having to have somebody there for the whole day to monitor the situation. So a lot of the larger events have already opted to do this. Brew Fest and Maple Festival will be two larger ones. We are looking to have council approve us to mandate the closure of the restrooms for events that are over 100 people and over four hours. I've provided on the second page a, just a chart of what we think is appropriate for each event based on hours, attendance, and number of restrooms that would be required, I'm sorry, number of temporary facilities that would be required. We're also asking that council require those events, once they've been identified as an event that needs to have their restroom closed, that we also are able to require that event to make one or two of their rented facilities ADA accessible. It's very important that everybody has an opportunity to use the facilities, and the typical portlet or temporary facility does not allow for that. So with that, I'll answer any questions the best I can. I'd actually like Mike to step up to the podium and be able to comment as well, but he's probably firsthand experienced the majority of the issues that we're having, and without getting into detail, graphic detail, I'm sure he could answer any questions better than I.
Yeah, the restrooms, as you can see on the suggested amount, I mean, there's only three toilets or two toilets in the women's and one toilet in the men's. It's just, it's not big enough. I did reach out to the plumber that installed them, and it's only sized specific to the 60 people that are allowed to be in the building and an occasional person walking by. I've been called in a number of times out of working hours to come in because they're clogged, because they're overflowing, because they're out of paper. It just, it seems like every event now, there's an issue with them. Yeah, it's, my recommendation also, they need to be closed down, and the portlets brought in, because it's not fair to one big event to have them shut down, and the next one comes along and they're wide open, and it's the same amount of people or whatever, so. Any other questions about them?
Mike, what would it take, or is it even possible, to upgrade the restrooms?
It's not possible.
The water supply issue.
Yeah, with the supply that's up there. We've done everything in our abilities with the boosters and stuff to upsize it, but it would need, I mean, another 10 stalls put in and everything too, and there's just not supply there, so.
It's part of this, Paul, about having like a hand, like right the wash stations too. Right, so we're saying that we're gonna, if they have to have a certain amount of porta-potties, one of them, or however many also, we're going to say, you know, they need to be ADA compliant, and then the wash stations too.
I would have to, I would have to defer to the health department on the, on the being able to, having to mandate it, but a wash station is also considered the, the safety or the sanitary solution within the, within the facility itself, and just about every unit comes, I've not seen one in the last however many years that does not have it. Now, over the course of a few hours, if it's not refilled, it may be empty. There are temporary wash stations. Brew Fest puts up one or two. I believe Maple Festival puts up a half dozen throughout, so that would be up to the individual event, because it does cost money. It's not, you know, free of charge type service.
How would this impact, this recommendation impact concerts on the square?
It's, they're not more than three hours, and we feel, since it's a city event, that we'll have someone there if need be.
We haven't experienced it. We haven't experienced problems with the, with the concerts on the square. That's not to say that the, they don't fall within the recommendation guidelines, so it's, it's possible. I don't think we're, I don't think we can identify our, our events as special. I don't know, I would defer to the law director, but.
Well, it doesn't fall within it, because it's four hours and greater than 100 people. The concerts aren't longer than four hours.
Right, so.
So they can be open, with the answer to the question. I guess a little history on this is after the Art Festival in July, we had a, August, we had a follow-up meeting with members of that committee, and that's what prompted this review of what we're offering and what's going to be closed and what's not. So the sticking topic at that point, and I'm sure those of you that were in attendance at that meeting, was for an event such as the Art Fest where they have multiple vendors in place under tents, and their request was to have the restrooms only open to vendors, not to the public at large. Correct? That's where we netted out?
Correct.
And so this, it's, it's a tough call.
This was discussed in the, that, that specific topic was discussed in the pre-meeting. We tried to, since COVID and, you know, the postponement of many events, and then, you know, a lot of events coming back and new events, we are, try to be as diligent as possible about having a pre-event coordination meeting. I take notes, Mike takes notes, whomever is in attendance. We are now in the practice of copying those notes, typing them out, and then sending to the event participants or the event coordinators so that everybody's on the same page. That topic was discussed at the pre-meeting with the coordinators from Arts Fest, and we recommended it strongly, and they chose not to, you know, pay attention to the recommendation. And we said that you can't have it closed for some and open for others, and that would draw some probably negative attention. And then that day of the event, things just, that was still their wish of the day of the event, and fortunately, they had enough temporary facilities there to accommodate their crowd.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendations from the service department.
I'll second. Do we have baby shower, bridal shower? Can't we, don't we, or can't the event coordinator have the opportunity to close off the restrooms to the public?
No.
Because I know, I thought, I mean, we talked about that way back when we were trying to establish.
When we originally did, it was decided to keep them open because they were public bathrooms.
Yeah.
That if somebody rented the facility, they would have to be told that they were, they would know that they were sharing them with the public, because that was why they were built, separate from the great room, so that the public could come in and out and not have to go into the great room.
Do we need to discuss staff for their public restrooms?
No. Not from staff. We haven't had a problem with it.
The Arts Festival vendors, there's 100 of them, and then you've got your 10 committee members, say, so to speak, and volunteers, and so, and, you know, to man the door so that it's just open for vendors and, not open to public, because there were plenty of porta-pots.
I don't think you can do that.
Well.
Why not?
It's a public restroom.
But they're closed.
Then they're closed to everyone.
No.
It would be difficult to manage, because all the different groups do different things.
Right.
So say, when the Maple Festival's there, they use the great room for the public to go through, so they couldn't keep those open, because they can't only allow certain people to come into the building, which is what the Arts Festival did. Every group does something differently, so, I mean, if council wants to say, okay, Chardon Square, when they do the Arts Festival, they can do this, nobody else can do it, obviously council can do what you wish, but our recommendation, the staff's recommendation, is that it'd be clear-cut, it's adopt the policy according to the different numbers and the graph, and have them closed if there's too many people on the square. If council wants to make exceptions, that's up to you guys.
And there's no issue on Friday night concerts?
Not at the time right now. It's under the three hours, and it hasn't, we don't have lines lining up, and you're only there for two hours.
Right.
Like we do.
But, I mean, it definitely does get used. I don't know how much.
Yeah, no, it gets used.
I mean, I don't know how many people.
If it becomes an issue, then, then they have to fall within the same standard. But at present, we don't see an issue with the concerts.
Right, absolutely. If we were to have that many more people there for a long period of time, we would have to follow the same.
And, and just real quick, and this is just my data analysis, anybody can go back, I mean, I'm not an expert in portlets, I've somewhat become one, unfortunately, but even the vendors at 100 plus over an eight-hour period, we would recommend that the restroom is closed, and that they get a portlet and a ADA, and an ADA accessible restroom.
I mean, they're longer, they're there at 7:00 or more.
Again, to the, it's not one size fits all, and I think that the graph in page two is evident to that, it's, it's.
That's my, that's my thought, is one size doesn't fit all. You set up a policy like this, then you're giving no flexibility whatsoever with staff working with the group.
But you're treating everybody the same.
I understand that.
And you're treating, and you're not, so the staff doesn't have to work harder to, because, so let's just say that you say, okay, you're allowed to let some people use the restrooms. How do you know how many people they're actually going to let use the restrooms unless you have a staff person there who's also keeping an eye on it? I did the flea market in June with Melanie. We were right by the restrooms the whole time. Midday, and it wasn't, and we had porta-potties too, midday, the toilets started flooding by the base. So we call Mike, we say, what are we supposed to do? Because there wasn't anything, there was a, you know, we were in there cleaning them and taking care of them, Melanie was. There wasn't anything that we could see, and they were like, close the restrooms down. You know, there's no, you know. Then we had people who were literally berating us, because now the restrooms are closed. Well, they were just open. Well, now they're closed, because we have flooding. We were saying that. I'm sorry, the restrooms are closed now, because we have flooding. We had so many people who were rude to us, because they were open, now they're not open. So for me, if they weren't open, you know, there's signs on the door, you let people know. You know, we don't, I mean, if the restrooms are open and left open and you have exceptions, then the staff is always going to have to be on call to deal with whatever comes up if people don't, you know, they don't follow it.
In the last few events, we have closed Brew Fest, Kids Fest, and people, you got a couple of people that might gripe right in the beginning, but they're just fine with it then. You show, you point them in the direction of the portlets and go on their way.
Paul, in the pre-meeting you have with these, with these groups, I did see your notes from the last one. Is it appropriate to, this is going to become part of what they, they receive in the pre-meeting? And then, should you have them sign something to indicate that they, they were in the meeting and they, they're signing off on what you're telling them we can, they can do?
If that's what council would like. These are recommendations. Again, I'm not a temporary facilities expert. I mean, there's a website at the bottom of the chart that anybody can go to, and, and even though Maple Festival, for instance, if you look at what would be required for them, they've not had a problem. They've had more than enough facilities over the years, but they don't really meet the, what is, I don't want to call it, the industry guidelines, because that's basically what this is based off of. Probably a little less. Brew Fest, you know, anything with alcohol, you, you times two, just because of liquids, but Brew Fest doesn't necessarily fall, they, they do fall within the guidelines here, but with liquids, they don't. So understand that this information is gathered from companies who make a living off of, offering services. We're trying to interpret it best, the best we can, based on the information that we have on the events that happen, so.
You said these are recommendations to us, but we're going to make policy out of this.
But it doesn't mean we can't change it. Once if we go through it and find that there's a problem, we can always change it.
If, I mean, I don't know, I don't think that this is intended to penalize an event coordinator for not having enough facilities. That just ensures the success of their event. I, I don't, I'm not going to be out there on a Friday counting porta-potties for, you know.
Yeah, so what you're really saying is, you're just looking for council to agree to close the restroom. It says here, number of restrooms required with Heritage House closed. Well, that's not what you're really doing. You're not going to require that, right? Based on what you just said.
I think you're interpreting the word required. This is, this is based on industry information. These are the amounts of temporary facilities that would be required for an event with X amount of duration.
So you are going to require.
Well, let's use the word recommended there.
I noticed, right, it does say recommendation at the top of the tab.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is it required or recom, is it a recommendation or a requirement?
How would you like it? How would you like it?
I'm asking you. It's your, you're, you're the one bringing this forward.
The only thing I'm asking for is to close the Heritage House restroom.
Okay.
I can't, I, I'm not even asking, if they don't want to bring temporary facilities in, that just, that just shoots their event in the foot.
So those are, that part's recommendation.
Well, I think it should be a requirement.
Well, let's decide.
I mean, look, if you're going to have an event on the square with 1,000 people, you need restrooms. We're saying we're going to close the restrooms, because our restrooms can't handle that volume. So my suggestion would be that it's a requirement, and that part of that being that we have an ADA compliant restroom. I don't, I feel like we're overcomplicating this.
I do, I agree that this is what they understand. There is no.
It's not, yeah, there's no gray areas here.
Can I follow, Paul, that you glean from many sources, but we're going to have to trust that someone knows a whole lot about this, and if there's going to be 4,000 to 5,000 people there, number of restrooms required is 27.
Seven for 4 of us.
Right? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, correct.
That's what we tell them, that's what there's, that's what they should have. Now, for your direction of, are they going to be penalized if they don't have 27? I don't know. But we're at least telling them, this is what is a requirement based on the agreement that potentially they're signing with the city to run their event on the square.
Just take out required, put suggested or recommended.
I think it should be required. Why wouldn't we require there to be restrooms on the square if there's 5,000 people on the square? Why wouldn't that be a requirement?
There's a recommendation of how many, but if they're not going to have porta-potties, that's their problem.
We require them to have insurance, we require them to have other things. If you have the Brew Fest, we're requiring that they have a fence. I mean, why, why is this, why does this matter that we say, I mean, why is it, why wouldn't we say we require you have a certain amount of restrooms? I mean, that's just being responsible.
I think the language, the way it is, it doesn't say, there's nothing in here about penalties, and I'm fine with that as well. So right now, we have a motion and a second to approve this recommendation. I'd like to call the questions.
Agreed.
Call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
I understand.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business D, consider all liquor permits set to renew on October 1st, 2023. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Annually, the city has the opportunity to consider whether it intends to object to any Class C or D issued permits issued in the bill, or the city, all about that. I'm not aware of any rationale from a health, safety, and welfare perspective that would give the city cause to object to any of the reissuances.
Any questions or comments for Ben?
I just always like to ask our chief as well, if he has any thoughts. I'd always like to ask our chief as well, if he has any thoughts towards it.
I'm not aware of any issues with any of our current liquor permit establishments that would render us to make a decision otherwise.
Take any action? Nope. Thank you, Ben. New Business E. Consider revised cemetery sexton job description. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to many requests, we are, we would like to open up the sexton position to our existing employees, and in doing so, we looked at job descriptions primarily during our collective bargaining negotiations. The current job descriptions, there's very little difference, a few clerical things, too, to be exact. But in an effort to make this a more well-rounded position, it's still basically very much like the current maintenance worker position, but I've added a few additional responsibilities that I feel would be helpful, and that I believe that the individual should be able to carry out, to add more of a service-type aspect to the position, similar to that of our former sexton, Carl, who was very, very good at assisting funeral directors, those coming to the cemetery for the first time, those visiting the cemetery to come see loved ones who've passed. But there are some things, technology is improving, the ability to better track location, availability, and as we get into expanding the cemetery down the line, far down the line, these are some of the things that I think are important for that individual to have as a skill set. So I am asking for council to approve the job description as they've received it in the packet, and I can answer any questions.
I have a comment. Of course I do. I would like you to put in the last line on the first page, ability, work closely with the city employees, general public, families of the deceased and funeral directors. Include that general public and families of the deceased under your fourth bulletin at the top, under essential duties. You have worked closely with city office staff, and I think you should put with the city employees, add that in, the general public and the families of the deceased and the funeral directors. Do you follow that?
I'm just making sure that it's, we don't have the same.
I think that's an essential, those are essential duties and responsibilities, and then, I mean...
Are you saying you want that language in there twice, up in the essential duties and other knowledge and skills, both?
Well, they did have the other, you know, like referring to funeral directors, working closely, so that's up to Paul. But I just think...
Again, we do have it covered under knowledge, skills, and abilities. The essential duties, I can, I have no problem adding it. And I thought it would be redundant, but if you'd like it added, that's fine.
I would.
I think it just highlights the importance of that aspect of that job. If you add it on top, it is redundant, but I think...
So we already have city staff and office staff in there, so, I mean, they are, but I definitely, definitely add family if you could repeat that one time, so I don't miss anything.
And general public. Like when I go down there, even though my...
Your city staff.
Family member of deceased.
We can do that, absolutely.
Thank you. Other than that, it looks good.
Are there any other questions for Paul? Is there a motion to accept the sexton job description rewrite with the edits from Deb?
So moved.
Second, further discussion? Paul, the question?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
The motion is adjourned. Yes. Moving on to legislation. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning classification of a portion of a permanent parcel number 10-165740 from C1 Restricted Business District to R3 Medium Density Residence District. Authorizing a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning classification of permanent parcel numbers 10-165740, 10-165741, and 10-165742 from R3 Medium Density Residence District to PRD Planned Residential District. Approving a concept plan for said parcels as a planned residential district and adopting an announcement of decision regarding the zoning map amendment and concept plan.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3250. An ordinance authorizing a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning classification of a portion of permanent parcel number 10-165740 from C1 Restricted Business District to R3 Medium Density Residence District. Authorizing a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning classification of permanent parcel numbers 10-165740, 10-165741, and 10-165742 from R3 Medium Density Residence District to PRD Planned Residential District. Approving a concept plan for said parcels as a planned residential district and adopting an announcement of decision regarding the zoning map amendment and concept plan. Ordinance number 3250. An ordinance authorizing a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning classification of a portion of permanent parcel number 10-165740 from C1 Restricted Business District to R3 Medium Density Residence District. Authorizing a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning classification of permanent parcel numbers 10-165740, 10-165741, and 10-165742 from R3 Medium Density Residence District to PRD Planned Residential District. Approving a concept plan for said parcels as a planned residential district and adopting an announcement of decision regarding the zoning map amendment and concept plan.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3250?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the ordinance so states with such eloquent brevity, all this does is what we've talked about twice now tonight. It's taking the parcels that are going to be part of the Willow Tree development and rezoning it from their current zoning classifications to the planned residential district zoning classification. It's also adopting the concept plan, which you've approved as part of the announcement of decision that we've discussed earlier. So that's it.
Steve, you have anything to add that you didn't prior?
I have nothing to add unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ben or Steve?
I would just like to thank Steve. I called him on at least one occasion and asked for some clarification and stuff, and he was very helpful. Appreciate it.
Anything else? Call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Legislation B. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3251. An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2023 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3251. An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3251?
So moved. Second.
Move the second in discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, you have before you an amended appropriations ordinance for your review and consideration. The increase of $23,000 in the sidewalk improvement fund budget for street maintenance is due to additional costs related to the Center Street Sidewalk Info Project. The sidewalk fund has money available to cover these additional costs.
Are there any questions for Mark?
I have a question.
Yeah, for the inch there. What's going on here?
And sorry, I should, you, council already approved this with the bid. This is just to put money back in the fund to cover the other projects that were originally budgeted, which is design of additional sidewalk projects.
They're trying to stake a change order.
Yeah. Did you say that concrete had been put in and then taken back out?
Yes.
What, what was that?
They got caught in the rain, and it was not acceptable service.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
Yeah, I did.
Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Moving on to Legislation C. Would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution providing for the control of blight and disease of shade trees within public rights of way and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the City of Chardon. Authorizing the Shade Tree Commission to so provide during the year of 2023. Establishing a single district for said purpose in accordance with the provisions of Section 727.011 of the Ohio Revised Code, providing the assessment of the costs and expense of such planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing upon benefiting property in said district and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Resolution number 16-23. A resolution providing for the control of blight and disease of shade trees within public rights of way and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the City of Chardon. Authorizing the Shade Tree Commission to so provide during the year of 2023. Establishing a single district for said purpose in accordance with the provisions of Section 727.011 of the Ohio Revised Code, providing the assessment of the costs and expense of such planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing upon benefiting property in said district and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 16-23. A resolution providing for the control of blight and disease of shade trees within public rights of way and for planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing shade trees in and along the streets of the City of Chardon. Authorizing the Shade Tree Commission to so provide during the year of 2023. Establishing a single district for said purpose in accordance with the provisions of Section 727.011 of the Ohio Revised Code, providing the assessment of the costs and expense of such planting, maintaining, trimming, and removing upon benefiting property in said district and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of Resolution number 16-23? So moved.
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Randy?
This is the annual shade tree assessment that Urban Forester talked about a little while ago. It is the same amount of money as it's been for several years now, $70,000 for the year. That goes to all the different programs that the Urban Forester oversees and the Shade Tree Commission.
Probably. Are there any questions for Randy?
Randy, in that, should it be 24?
No, the year should be 23 because it's this year that they collect it as for next year. We've gone through that in the past, yeah, but thanks.
Nothing.
And I was thinking the same thing a minute ago.
I asked last year.
Call the question.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Moving on to Legislation D. Would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution of necessity for the assessment of street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Resolution number 17-23. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 17-23. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of Resolution number 17-23?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Randy?
This is the third of the three assessments that are on the property taxes in the city, and it definitely is just for the sidewalks, and I'll read Section 2, which defines the use. It's the City of Chardon, so I use the funds assessed and collected to pay for the repair and maintenance of existing sidewalks and the construction of sidewalks in developed areas that lack sidewalks. So this is the money that continues the sidewalk program and also gives some money towards infill if we need it and when we can get that money together. And the $100,000 was determined when we first started this program, and we're sticking
Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to legislation E. Would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion, read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Move the second in discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Resolution number 18-23. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency. Resolution number 18-23. A resolution of necessity for the assessment of sidewalks and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 18-23?
So moved. Second.
Move the second in discussion? Randy?
This is the third of the three assessments that are on the property taxes in the city, and it definitely is just for the sidewalks, and I'll read section two, which defines the use. It's the City of Chardon, so I use the funds assessed and collected to pay for the repair and maintenance of existing sidewalks and the construction of sidewalks in developed areas that lack sidewalks. So this is the money that continues the sidewalk program and also gives some money towards infill if we need it and when we can get that money together. And the $100,000 was determined when we first started this program, and we're sticking with that same amount of money for now.
Randy?
A question. Where are we in the, in the inspection cycle geographically? Are we going back and inspecting existing sidewalks for lifting and cracks and things like that?
We will, we will be in the third year of inspection presently. This year's is the, trying to remember, very small. I'm sorry, you kind of caught me off guard. We continue to do it. We've seen a decrease, which we'd hope to do. We did, the first section was this area around town. Second section is the area north street, joining areas around there. But it's, again, it's very, very small.
We see a larger-than-expected expense in those others?
In the, in the year one.
In year one of our, yeah.
Section, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, because we took carryover money and then added it to it.
So this, that, that was an outlier.
Older sections of town, correct. Yeah, it's, that first section was, it was surprisingly larger than what we anticipated.
Any other questions for Randy?
And just, just as an FYI, it's primarily because of tree roots. I would say 70% is, is what we're seeing, you know? Not to put a specific earmark, but tree roots are the primary cause.
Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Legislation F, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Is there a motion, read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved. Second.
The second in? Discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Resolution number 19-23. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Resolution number 19-23. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 19-23? So move?
Second.
Move the second in discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, the 2024 tax budget was brought to council in July. That was the first part of the process. In August, we met with the Budget Commission, they approved it, and this is just the final step for the 2024 tax budget.
Any questions, Mark? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. LoCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Moving on to agenda item number 12, review of expenditures. Dan?
Yes, they have been reviewed and they are in order.
Thank you. Agenda item number 13, executive session. Do not have need of an executive session.
Whoa.
Even though it's unlucky number 13, but we're, we're going to move on to agenda item number 14, any other business to come before council?
I have one thing to mention. Recently, at a birthday party, there were members of all the different 501 groups who were present. Eagles, Chamber, Chardon Square Association, Rotary, and we were sitting around talking about the need to, how we could support the Jaga Hunger Task Force. And so we are working on right now, and going to go back to all of our groups, to see if there's a way that we can do coordinated drives for specific items on a yearly basis rather than just at the holidays, so, and throw everybody's name behind it. So it's not a new group, it's just that everybody's working together. So I hope to come back to you maybe next month with it, like a little bit more fleshed out with the schedule of what we're looking for, but was hoping also that the city would be in support of that, so I will come back to you with that. But it was really a, really interesting thing to be sitting there with all these people who are part of all these civic groups, who already do all the stuff for the community, for everybody trying to work together to do more.
I wanted to give some congratulations to Councilman Blackley and his writing skills and recognition over the last month or so. I think he shared with us the article that was published in The Plain Dealer, and I read it all and learned a great deal about the naval excavades on Lake Erie, and it was, it was well-written, and congratulations. And I know you also got a bigger recognition from, describe that one to us again, please.
Sure. Well, every year, the Chief of Naval Operations, which is the four-star Admiral at the, at the top of the, of the US Navy, his office sponsors a naval history essay writing contest. And I've been submitting papers for that the last several years. I've won it two years in a row, a second-place prize, and this year, a third-time charm, I've got the first-place prize. So I'll be, I'm going to be in Naval Academy in Annapolis next week. I'm going, there's something every year called, or every other year called McMullen Naval History Symposium. I'm going to be presenting a paper there anyhow, but I will be receiving my award at the, at a special luncheon that they do, and I'll be, hopefully it'll be handed to me there by the Admiral. So yes, it's quite a, quite an honor, I'm very, very gratified.
Well, congratulations.
And I'll, I'll provide you a link later when it gets published. The name of the paper was The Double-Edged Sword, The Legacy of Bases of the Central Pacific. And it was, had to do with something that Admiral Chester Nimitz wrote in 1943 about how the bases that the US Navy and the Marines were capturing from the Japanese were going to be still in existence after the war, and that 20 or 30 years in the future, a new power might arise in the Western Pacific that might try to utilize those bases coming from the other direction, back towards the continental United States. So his warning was that we need to be aware of that and to defend these bases, and so my article was repeating what his warning was and putting it in the context of the current challenge we have from China and the Indo-Pacific.
Well, please pass that on, Lynn.
I'm sure you're all just dying to read more about that.
Well, once again, congratulations, Andy. Does there anybody else have anything else come before council?
No, I think he anchored it well.
Anchored it well.
Aye, aye.
The Handmade Harvest Market is this weekend? Party for Association.